So, welcome to the Bronxville Zoning Board of Appeals. I am Stuart McIntosh and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. I'm joined by Janie Regan, John Brown to my right, Marty Muir, and Greg Jacknow. And also joining us is our superintendent for the village, Paul Taft. So, as a reminder, to get an application approved, you need the majority of us voting members to approve it. So, all five of us will be voting tonight, and so you'll need three approvals. Tonight, we have two cases. We're going to start with 55 Valley Road. And please, when you speak, make sure you stand and speak into the mic, which is at the lectern. Okay. So Maggie, you going to represent? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Moron, the architect for Thaddeus and Jen Rudd at 55 Valley. The Ruds moved into their house probably about three years ago, right around the beginning of COVID, and it's a fantastic house inside. It's absolutely gorgeous, but the one thing that's really, really lacking is the kitchen. It's decent. It's very narrow, and they're really big chefs, so they really like to cook. So, they'd like to bump out, past owners have actually thought of this but never done it, is push out the back behind the kitchen and square it off with the rest of the house and create a big walk-in kitchen with an island and a table and just a lot more space for entertaining and for cooking, and also then have an access out, because right now it's... They're almost one-story, so that's one of the reasons why we're here, is because in the front of the house, it's a two-story house, but in the back of the house, the grade drops off. And the basement's above grade. And there's also a dormer in the back of the house on the third floor, which is not at the front of the house. So, they had to include the attic and the basement in the FAR calculations. So, that's why the existing FAR is, I mean, any additional work they did would require an FAR variance, because they're already over the maximum FAR. But it's really because of the basement and the attic. If you took those away, they'd be well under the FAR. So, but in the addition they're adding, they're going to add porch on the first floor level, which would have stairs down to their driveway. And that way, they have a few chairs and a table. And underneath that will be open. And in the basement, they will make, right now, the basement's unfinished, but they're planning on making it a playroom and a mudroom. And on the first floor, it would be a kitchen with a very small powder room and some small mudroom area. I don't know if... Can you see where the... Let me help you get this thing. All right, I'll figure this out. Okay, so, this is the area, that's the basement area right here. We're looking at a basement plan. The basement right now, that's a current existing basement. That's like an exercise room. And the rest of the basement is not, most of it's not even dug out. It's bedrock, and there's just a existing basement that, right here, that's unfinished. So, they'd like to bump it out and make... I'm trying to see where we are. That's all existing. That's upstairs, and we can skip that. And that's the third floor that has to be included. That's the roof. So, this is the ba... Oh, yeah, this is the proposed basement plan. So, there's, this would become a playroom, and then a mudroom right there. And then, this is, this would be just a cover, covering over the, with the porch above. And right now, that whole area is all paved, so there's no new impervious surface at all. In fact, we're actually taking away impervious surface. And if you go back to the site, well, I can show you where it is. This area here, right now, is a big patio, and that's going to all come out. So, they're gaining pervious surface. They're going to have some more planted areas. And so, there's no extra water runoff than what's existing. It'll be actually less than what's existing.
Is that why the building coverage ratio comes down?
Yeah.
Maggie, is it that area on the right?
Yes, the area to the right, we're taking out a pa... a fairly large patio. If you go to the site plans, there's an existing and proposed, okay. So, right now, there's a patio all in here, and that's all coming out. And I think it'll make a big difference on the impervious surface in terms of drainage going down the hill. They also recently did a project. You can see this little wall at the back. They just finished that, and it's just a, they were going to put a swing set in, and they decided not to do that, but they put a, trying to make a little flat area. It's very small, and it's only about a three-foot-high retaining wall. But they put three drywells, very large drywells in there, and, which they didn't need. They only needed one. So, the extra, any extra water from the new leaders would go down to those drywells. The kitchen's around, it's a 12 by 23, or 12 by 24, actually. And the deck will be about 10 by 24. Let's see. And, you know, so it's still a one-story addition. I mean, and it's very hard to see it from down below. It's, I mean, if you can't, I couldn't even get a picture of the house behind. You go downhill so much, you can't even see the full house. So, it's hard to get a feeling of what it looks like, but it's really going to just blend right in. It's still, there's no setback issues. It's within the 15, it'll be just 15 feet from the side yard and, you know, well, way far back, 60 feet or so from the rear.
So Maggie, can I just ask you, so you're going to push out the kitchen part, and then below, you said it's going to be open, or is...
No, the kitchen, sorry.
The kitchen will go out, and then the basement...
So, the kitchen's going out, and there will be...
Below, okay. And then, when the kitchen goes out further, that'll be open with the deck.
The deck will have the open...
And then, it'll be open under there, yes. Gotcha.
And Maggie, what's the plan for the other patio area?
At this point, I mean, I don't think they're planning on doing anything for a while. I mean, I don't know, do you have any plans? The one they're keeping, the big one in...
I guess it's all, it'll be off the deck with the new deck.
So, you're still going to have to go down some steps.
There's currently a blue-stone patio. There are two sections to it. There's an patio that's adjacent to the garage extension. That's what the remainder is. The patio area that I was referring to earlier, it was a secondary area they created with the hot tub, the blue stove. We're picking that up because we don't need it. We use it, we're finding the pedals and to have a, 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 a more, you know, we don't need the art state. And this entire area, the area that the position was being proposed, is currently in a chamber state, creating like secondary driveway area slash patio area. We don't use that either. So, we're picking all that up. Some of it is built out, the remainder will be integrated in the existing patio. But we're trying to pick and choose the blue stove area we want, and if we have stuff, we don't, so that there's, you know, pedals and stuff like that. Because there's a lot of walkways, because it's a, it's a downhill slope.
Right.
It's not an alley, so we're just trying to pick up the, the soaps.
And then, Maggie, included in the plan was, I guess, some landscaping has been done on the hillside?
Quite a bit of landscaping. They've planted a lot of shrubs and trees to kind of protect the neighbors below from having water go down into their property, so.
You got a lot of support neighbors, you know, letters from your neighbors in support. Is the person directly behind you one of the letters, or is it...
They're the only ones that are.
Well, we have two people right here.
Oh, you have two, okay.
So, the person that...
Oh, you're one of them.
We direct people having a major shift.
Oh, okay, so, yeah. All right, so your neighbors are happy with all this, yeah.
So, you're in the red brick house?
I'm in the stucco house.
The stucco house, okay.
Right below.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And excuse me, if you could introduce yourself?
I'm Mary Smith, 36 Avon Road.
Okay, right, right. And you wrote the supporting letter, correct?
Yes, you wrote the supporting letter.
Okay.
It was just possible, we engaged Aces Corral to the entire backyard of the Slopen Hill redevelopment, so we took out weeds and stuff and, oh, it's years ago. So, I don't know if it was 60 or 160, but it did, it planted things, a mixture of shrubs and whatnot that will mature. We also planted, I think it was 12 skip laurels on the property bordering Mary's house. Their existing 10-foot-high hollows that we inherited, they're missing the other house that's down slope. The reason why we did it was to unify the little yard, which is not usable, but a few of us and a few old neighbors, and wanted to plant things that are required, and they continue to grow and mature. He added values that hopefully increases the, you know, just the adhesion and minimizes any law of drainage. But we did that before there was this project in mind, just to be like a background. As part of that, you know, we had the engineering study done, and drywells and all those, all those things. And if Mary can speak to it, we'll retain the credit to do the study for this job.
We got a copy of that, it's the one you sent us today, right Maggie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. I noticed in that Cronin letter that was preliminary, when is the final going to be done?
After they get approval. Yeah, they didn't want to do a final, I mean, because it's going to take a little more time. So, it's, you know, it's, if they get approved, they would move forward with that.
I also had a question out of curiosity. I noticed in the letter to the zoning board, the owners indicated that their appliances were energy-electric and will continue. Is there any significance to that statement?
Yes.
What does that have to do with this?
When we bought the house, it came, there was no act of gas in the house at all. The cranes converted to oil heat from gassy in the late 80s, as we were told. So, it's been oil heated house. The kitchen, we inherited when we bought it during COVID, so we delayed in renovations. I was like, late 90s, there are electric stoves and stuff, and we have electric washer dryer. But with the, you know, the invention of induction, we decided we're not going to file on the upside. We're going to keep the electric, because induction will suit our needs just fine.
So, is it still, you still have an oil burner?
We did.
Oh, you don't, okay. Okay. Are there any more questions? Is there anyone here from the public that have any questions? Nope. Folks, anyone else? We're all good?
Yeah, good.
Okay. Okay, so let me propose a resolution that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant to the residents of 55 Valley Road, variant, the following variances. There are two. Section 310-9E, pre-existing non-conforming building coverage, allowed 22.5%. Existing 35.6%. Proposed 34.7. Variance required 12.2%. Second variance is section 310-9G, again, pre-existing non-conforming FAR, allowed as .298, existing is .336, proposed is .37. Variance required .0725. Okay. Marty, I'm going to start with you. Your thoughts?
I would approve the variances. I think that they've acted very responsible to their neighbors by doing things proactively, and also, the changes are very modest, and I think it would frankly improve the appearance of the back of the house to all the neighbors. So, I very much approve it.
Great, thank you. Janie?
I also approve. I think, you know, it's, the building coverage one is kind of funny, because you're getting more green space back. So, you know, that doesn't even, even though you have to get that, I understand. And the other is, well, I agree, it's not a big substantial thing, and it's definitely, looks like a good idea. So, I approve.
Thank you. John?
I concur with my colleagues, and I approve.
Greg?
I approve as well.
As do I, okay. So, the variances are approved. Congratulations. Just remember to get your work done within a year, or Paul will be after you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Irene, that's right.
Good luck with everything.
Yeah, good luck.
Irene's there, the neighbor.
That's another name.
Yeah, Bruce, Bruce as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm going to show it to her.
Yeah. They had kids, yeah, no, it was really nice.
No, no, but they said it was...
It's nice to go behind you.
Oh, oh, they went here, that lady Samantha, because it's on Avon, 36 and 40. So, she was in the stucco. There's also a red brick house. I guess their property kind of straddles, and they didn't write a letter.
I was just wondering why.
I don't know. But if you go back and you see, it's that stone wall there.
Okay, so let's move on. Our second and last application is 27 Sturgis Road. Who will be presenting, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steven Accinelli from Veneroso Curdo Schwarz &amp; Curdo, on behalf of the applicant. Here with me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is the architect for the project, Joseph Crocco. He'll be available and also present the design elements of the proposed work. And the homeowner, Andrew Corb, is also present this evening as well. A couple of things. I had submitted, as part of the application package to the board, a statement of my principal points, which outlined, outlined the balancing test and the five factors. So, those are part of the record. I'm not going, with the board's permission, I'm not going to go through those here this evening. I would like to highlight a couple of things. The property, as the board may be aware, is a vacant, single-family dwelling that my client wishes to upgrade and renovate as per the proposed plans. In contemplation of the work to be done, my client took great efforts to work on a design plan that was respectful of the character of the neighborhood and the interests of the neighbors. In fact, my client also met with his neighbors individually at the property and reviewed with the neighbors, the proposed expansion plans, and answered any questions that they had, and really wanted to make sure that they were familiar with and comfortable with the proposed development. In addition, I know that the surrounding property owners, which I believe the board should have in the records, wrote letters in favor, there were four of them, I believe, in favor of the application. So, I understand those are in the record as well.
Yeah.
With the board's permission, I would like to have Joe Crocco walk the board through the design elements. In summary, you know, there are four area variances that are being requested. Actually, three of them all relate to side yard, left, right, total side yard variances, which emanate in large part to pre-existing non-conforming conditions at the house, with the only new element, if you would, relating to building coverage, with a, I think, a significant portion attributable to the grade-level patio that is proposed in the rear of the house. All of this work is going to occur in the rear of the house. So, again, with the board's permission, I'd ask Mr. Crocco to walk the board through the design elements.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Joseph Crocco, for McDonnell Avenue, Armagh, New York. Good evening. I am the architect for the project. Steve started out to explain this is the area that we're adding on. It's a first-floor addition. There's no second floor on the building. This is obviously the existing site plan. Can we go to the floor plan? Let's go to the next sheet. That's the basement. What we're adding is a master bedroom suite with a master bath and master closet. We're extending the kitchen out and extending five feet at the rear of the existing family room. The one variance is, on the right side yard, is being created by the fireplace. A lot of codes allow a projection of two feet into the side yard. Your code doesn't, but that's creating part of the variance. May also, can we go back now, one sheet? Yep. This is the basement area, which falls under the proposed addition. This is an area way here for an exit out of this room. Couple of things that, the lot size is substandard to start with. The minimum is 15,000. We're 13.5, 13.4 roughly. And the existing side yards are already established at roughly 15 feet each, so we're not going beyond what's already been established, even though it still creates a variance because of the total requirement of the side yards being 35 feet. Can we go on to the elevations, please? Yeah, we're renovating the entire exterior of the house. Existing stone is going to remain. We're adding a dormer here, which is going to be highlight into the living room. We're putting some vertical siding, some horizontal siding, putting a copper roof element over the garage door to help cut down on the height. In the rear, we're kind of echoing what we did in the front. This is the family room, with some doors out to a patio, which is one of the things that's creating our coverage variance. And this is where the grade drops off, where the walkout is from the basement, so. If there are any questions about the architecture, I'd gladly answer them. If not, I'll turn it back over to Steve to finish his presentation.
I had a question on the size of the new patio. What's, what's the dimensions of that, and what's the... Because I walked, I walked back to the property yes, this afternoon, and I was just trying to figure out how big that is.
Yeah, this is the existing, and this is what we're proposing. I believe it's like 15 by 18.
I think it's 532 square feet.
Yeah, it's less than, you know, 20 by 30, so it's like 18 by 30, something like that.
Okay, okay.
But it, it's so that we can accomplish, you know, a walkout from the family room and also a door from the kitchen.
That's really the cause of the...
Well, you know, here, right here, this increase...
Next one, next one. One more.
That's the patio, it was 532.
One more.
That's about 5%.
Yeah, so that gives you the square footage of what the patio was, that would be...
Includes the patio.
Yeah.
Is the current, does a current basement have a bedroom in it?
No.
Bedroom or bath, or?
It has a bath. It just, the only part of the basement that is usable is right behind the garage. It's crawl space under the whole entire right side of the house.
Right.
And then, the family room is on just the slab. Yeah, can we just back to the first sheet, maybe? We can show the, first, keep going, back to the floor plans. Go, keep going, go, 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 go. Right there. I mean, this is the basement now. This is crawl space. This is garage. This is the stair up, and this is just a room that...
Just one room.
Yeah.
It has a bathroom and a mechanical...
Right. This is the mechanical area here.
So, you're adding a bedroom downstairs underneath the addition?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's more or less for in-laws to come visit. Or not.
Good choice.
We're not on the floor, then I'll say they won't, I'm just kidding.
Right, right. I just, I just want to make sure I understand the FAR on this, because, well, I'm not, either one of you could answer this, this question, because you had to go before planning board because the FAR increased by over 30%. But if I read this correctly, your FAR, after your proposed renovation, is still below the required.
Yes.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
Okay.
The FAR is considerably under, I think it's 44 and we're around 35 or something like that. The numbers are on there.
Well, it says required is .33, and you end up at .247.
Yeah, and there's also square footage related to those numbers. Yes, we are, that is correct, we are. Because the basement, because of the high grading, doesn't...
Does not.
...to a story, so it's not counted in the FAR, so.
Okay.
So, all that space isn't in the FAR, even though you're going to get a bedroom and everything?
I can't.
All the space that you're adding below is also the basement part? That's not included in the FAR?
No.
Okay.
And Paul, again, the application we had earlier this evening, the basement was included. And I think, again, is that the ceiling height? Or what, again, is, triggers that?
That's the, that's the height from grade to the, to the bottom of a framing, I believe. And so, it exceeded 12 feet. And so, that, you know, there are a couple of triggers for that.
Right.
You know, so that's what triggered that one. They don't have that here.
Right.
So, you know, basement would not be considered part of FAR.
Okay.
But also, one point, when it is considered, it's the whole basement. It's not just the finished parts.
Oh, I see. So, if it triggers that, then the whole basement is included in the FAR?
Right. So, that, that previous application, you know, it didn't help them at all in that regard, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I have a question. You did some landscaping plans, I understand. We saw the rendering of the front of the house. Did you show a whole landscaping plan to the planning board, or is it...
Yes, well, let me just back...
You happen to have a picture or anything? I see the front, yeah.
We received architectural approval. We received planning board approval. They asked for a landscaping plan, so we submitted a landscaping plan, which they also...
Oh, that's the one that shows which trees are coming down and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great.
So, Design Review did approve that, the landscaping plan? Okay.
Right, I failed to mention, for the record, the applicant has been before both the planning board and the Design Review Board, and has been approved by both relative to those aspects. I guess pending approval of this board with respect to the variances.
Right.
Okay?
Good, okay.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, unless the board has any other questions. I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone from the public, unless they're hiding under a bench. Let me just check with my colleagues here. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Janie? Greg, you okay?
Yeah.
Marty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so let me propose a resolution that the Zoning Board of Appeals grant to the residents of 27 Sturgis Road. The following five variances. Number one, 310-25, excuse me, side yard, left side required 15 feet, existing 14.8 feet. Variance required .02. Number two, variance for section 310-9D, that's side yard on the right, also requires 15 feet. Existing, pre-existing non-conforming, 14.9, proposed 12.95 due to the chimney. Variance required 2.05 feet. Number three, section 310-09D, combined side yard, required 35 feet, existing 29.7, proposed Variance required 7.25 feet. Number four, section 310-26D, material... Material alteration. Increase in FAR exceeds 30%. Proposed increase 42.5%. Planning board, as we just mentioned, has approved this variance. And the last one is section 310-9E. Building coverage allowed 22.5. Existing 16.2. Proposed 30.9. A variance of 8.4%. Okay, let me start, Jan, I'm gonna start with you.
I approve the variance. I think, you know, it's gonna be a great change in the house and the house needs it, as we could all see. Also, thanks so much for doing your very thorough work on the five considerations because that was very well done and that's what we go through and I agree with all of your points for, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, John?
I'm in favor of the variance. I think the benefit to the applicant is clearly understood here and it's, again, it's, there's no real detriment to the neighborhood or the community.
Okay, Greg?
I agree and approve.
Great. Marty?
I approve as well. I think, and by the way, thank you for that write-up as well. I thought it was well, well-done and it makes our job so much easier. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I also agree with my colleagues and also would like to extend thanks for preparing that, the five points. That's also helpful for us. Variance is granted, congratulations. And again, reminder, let's get the job done on time within a year. Okay, so this
Thank you.
You're welcome. And good, and good luck, okay? This, this then ends the zoning board of appeals meeting and again, thank you for coming.